Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, November 5th, 2020, and we are in regular session tonight. We will be having prior to our starting planning and development committee meeting. That's chaired by Councilmember Fall and joined by Councilmembers Reisner and Grace.
Great, thank you. There's just one item on this agenda. It's concerning the sewer agreement that the city has with the county about the sewer extension that we are doing, that we've been doing for several years out into Radford Road area. And it's because of COVID, we need to change some of the dates for certain contractual reasons. And so instead of the date that it's now, it will be now to October 2026. There's issues of being able to get different contracts and those sort of things. And because of COVID, they need more time. Thank you. Questions? Okay. Thank you. That ends my committee.
Now move on to the regular session of business. And our first item is establishing a quorum. All members of council are present. The next item is communications, and we would turn first to council members. Are there any communications? Yes, Councilmember Fall.
Great, thank you. I did have several constituents who contacted me very, very concerned about the trick or treating, that the kids trick or treating sort of thing. And they are concerned, rightfully so, about having a lot of people come into some of these neighborhoods. And also, I had just a question along with those concerns is, if we jump another level in our COVID misery level, how does that also affect? So I just would like to have more information so I can tell my constituents what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, that sounds good. Thanks. Councilmember Claude Felcher and then Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysley. I would just like to remind anyone who's viewing that I believe you have until nine o'clock tonight to register to vote for this fall's election. And that early voting begins tomorrow morning at eight o'clock at the Board of Elections office at 15 South Court Street. So hopefully lots and lots of people are going to vote this year. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysley. Two communications this evening. The first is that the Environment and Sustainability Commission will be meeting this Wednesday at 6:00 PM. That's October 7th. And the second communication is a shout out to the the grounds department. I received a note from a resident of Briarwood Drive who states, after mowing our islands on Briarwood about three weeks ago, the street department came back and trimmed them up last week. In our 42 years living on Briarwood, this is clearly the best they have ever looked. A special thanks to the street department from the Briarwood neighborhood. So well done. Thank you.
Great. Any other communications? All right, we'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason?
No report.
Auditor Hekt?
No report.
Mayor Patterson?
Just a couple items tonight, President Nysley. The first off, if Ryan could put up on the share screen the map of the city. Just want to remind people that the 2020 leaf pickup schedule is out. This is also up on the city's website. But to start with, Area 1, which on the map you can see is the far east neighborhoods, as well as some of our more northern neighborhoods. The leaf pickup will begin October 12th and run through the 16th. And then it'll go on to Area 2 and Area 3, and then it'll circle back to Area 1. So we encourage people to take advantage of this program and to refer to the city's website for that leaf pickup schedule. Also, just a real quick update on the Richland Avenue pedestrian passageway. The current completion date is October 17th. Again, just bear in mind, depending on a number of factors that could move somewhat, but at this point, it looks like the pavement will be in place by, again, October 17th. The passageway is open to pedestrian passage. So that's worth keeping in mind as well. Another reminder, and that is that the city has issued the two grants to HAPCAP, the Hawking Athens Period Community Action, one for housing mortgage and rent relief. There is still money in those coffers for that program, as well as the city utility relief fund, also managed by HAPCAP. And I encourage people, if they're interested, to call HAPCAP at 740-767-4500 and get more details. It's not an overly onerous application process to apply for that funding, especially if you have been directly impacted by COVID-19. And those are my major updates for council tonight. Thank you, President Nysley.
Thank you. A bit of explanation before we start on our ordinances for reading. Our ordinances come through committee first, which is why we did have the Planning and Development Committee for the sewer extension movement, because we will be seeing an ordinance for that tonight. And then ordinances typically go through three readings. And so you'll notice that we lead off with ordinances for second reading. And for the most part, the title is read. I do pause to find out if people have comments or questions about them. We will be suspending one of our ordinances for second reading because we have a loan that is coming due on October 16th. So we have to be able to make the payment. We do have several of our first ordinances for first reading that because of deadlines or grant application opportunities that we will be suspending tonight. So you'll notice as we approach each of those that we'll have a motion to suspend and then a motion to approve on several of them. So we'll start off with the ordinances for second reading, 10320. This is an ordinance authorizing the creation of the University Estates Incentives District within the city of Athens, declaring improvements to certain real property within such incentive district to be a public purpose, describing the public infrastructure improvements to be made to benefit or serve the real property within such incentive district, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, creating a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments, and authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing agreement with the property owners in such incentive district. And this was introduced last session, regular session, by Councilmember Fall. Are there any comments or questions at this time? If not, we'll move on to ordinance 10420. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23 zoning code to include solar energy systems, and introduced by Councilmember Fall. If no comments or questions, I will move on to ordinance 10520. An ordinance designating Siemens Grocery located at 305 Union Street is a local historic designation, introduced by Councilmember Fall. Any comments or questions? Okay. And this is an ordinance designating the Athens Downtown Historic District as a local historic designation, introduced by Councilmember Fall. And if no comments or questions, I will move on to ordinance 10920. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into or to extend the agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office through December 31st, 2021, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell. The next one is ordinance 11020. This is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $123,411 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes previously issued for the purpose of paying part of the costs of acquiring a new pumper truck and related equipment, and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember Fall. Excuse me, Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 011020 as our pumper truck loan is due on October 16th.
Seconded.
Who seconded?
Member Fall.
Member Fall, thank you. We have a motion in second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Did I? Hello, can I go forward and make a motion?
Yes, we did vote on it.
Thank you, Chris. I'd like to make a motion to approve 011020.
Seconded.
President Nysley, I believe you're fading in and out. We can't hear you at times.
Okay, I'll do what I can to adjust it. And maybe Scott and Ryan can help me also with the sound on this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The motion was seconded.
Yeah, we do have a motion in second for approval. And are there any comments or questions? Okay. We'll call for the vote then. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Our ordinances for first reading, 11020, is an ordinance providing for the issuance, excuse me, ordinances for first reading now. 11120 is an ordinance accepting the plat of the Harold Avenue Commercial Subdivision, and is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. We talked about this last week. It has to do with splitting the lot into three separate lots that will be zoned industrial. And also have two easements for the city to be able to do a connecting road thing. Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions? Okay. And if no comments, then we'll move on to ordinance 11220. This is an ordinance authorizing an addendum to the agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners to extend the sanitary sewer collection services to unincorporated portions of the county in accordance with ordinance 9917, and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. Can I move to suspend the rules on this, please?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you. Being, we need to, you know, deal with things that are coming up because of COVID. Thank you.
We do have the grant deadline, right? All those in favor for suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 11220.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Councilmember Claude Felcher.
Great. This is part of a long-term project that we've been doing with the county. It's to help address some pollution and failing septic systems that are directly going into Marker Creek and then into the Hawking River. Athens is not the only one who relies on Hawking River recharge for some of their groundwater. And so it's important for us to be able to make sure that we take care of our environmental issues in our area. So, thank you.
Comments or questions on this before we vote? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
We had someone else voting as well, so that was good.
Love it.
Thank you.
Motion. I try to time my unmute, but sometimes it's a little off. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The ordinance is approved. Thank you very much. Big maxing for us, too. Ordinance 11320 is an ordinance authorizing the payment of a prior year expense and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysley. I do not have in my notes that this needs suspension, although it is a prior year bill. And so we're late into 2020.
Yes.
Does the clerk believe this should be suspended? Yes, thank you, Clerk Walker. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 011320 because it is a prior year bill.
Okay, and we have a second from Councilmember Fall. All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysley. I would like to make a motion to approve 011320.
Seconded by Councilmember Fall. Okay.
And this is a prior year bill, or should we? Should I go ahead and explain this? This is a prior year bill by the Department of Environment and Public Works. And this is for a salt bed, truck liner, and other equipment necessary for our snow removal and ice prevention in our roadways. We've had one truck that has been fitted, and then a second truck that was fitted. This was ordered in 2019, but it was delivered in 2020. So it does exist as a prior year bill needing council's approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance number 11420 is an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysley. I'll go ahead and read this ordinance. The 2020 appropriation ordinance, 13019, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $5,000. And I will continue reading this after I make a motion to suspend the rules for 01420. Thank you.
Very good. So we have a motion to suspend the rules. Do we have a second, please? By Councilmember?
Seconded.
Okay. So motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, the rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. Sorry for that blip there, but this appropriation ordinance needs to be passed tonight in order to catch up with some of our financial items in the city. And so I'll go ahead and continue to read that the appropriation ordinance is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $5,000 to water fund, 740.636, to cover utilities billing smart bill services through the year end, and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. Section 2, the 2020 appropriation ordinance, 13019, is further amended as follows: By decreasing Internal Service Fund, IT 865.647, transaction code 500, by $9,300, and increasing Internal Service Fund, IT 865.647, transaction code 200 to 300, by the same amount, to cover a maintenance license renewal that is due October 15th, 2020, and decreasing and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. So this is a software licensing that IT needs to renew. And as I said, it's due October 15th, and that's why we are moving forward on this now. Thank you, President Nysley.
Okay.
To make a motion to approve.
Yes.
Year 1420. Thank you.
And a second, please, and then we'll get auditor Hekt, seconded by Councilmember Fall. And now we have a comment from auditor Hekt, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, and probably we've talked about it before, but in section 2, where we're just moving funds from the 500s into the 200s and 300s, so it's no new money in there. And the maintenance contract, we have a lot of them due throughout the city, and everybody knows. And I just have to say that the money was in the budget to begin with and inadvertently reduced when we were reducing appropriations in funds earlier in the summer because of the reduction in revenue we were seeing. And so it's no new money, but it's not poor planning on their part. It was in there, and we took it out. Now we need to put it back in. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Any other, any questions or other comments? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Ordinance 11520 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 7, Traffic Code, Chapter 7.05, Parking Regulations, Section 7.05.13, Impounding of Vehicles, and is introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Nysley, thank you. This goes back to early spring when Attorney Sky Petty had a client and made a request on behalf of him. Basically, this, just to refresh everybody's memory, this is to change towing lots from within the, where towing lots have to be located within the city limits, to a five-mile radius. I will remind everyone that the Ohio Revised Code currently has a 25-mile radius for said lots. It could encourage better use of the property within city limits in eliminating parking or holding areas. But at the same time, less modes of transportation to remote lots could be a hindrance for people retrieving their vehicles. That, of course, is making the assumption that it's easy for citizens to reach the police department to pay these towing fines. I will just say that I wanted to put this forward because we had a citizen request for this. I did have a conversation with City Safety Director Chief Pyle about this, and he is comfortable with the ordinance as is. But we will allow everyone to weigh in and put their thoughts forward on this as this goes through its reads. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions at this point? Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nysley. It feels like a very long time ago when this discussion happened. But if I recall, the business and the resident who was requesting this change said that their particular property is near a current bus route. And so I wondered if we could include within a five-mile radius, but also perhaps like within a half mile of a public transportation route, or something like that, just to ensure that someone with auto vehicle has less than five miles to walk, perhaps? But that's just the thought that occurred to me is that if, someone help me, please, if I'm misremembering that originally. But I believe that the property that was being discussed is near our public transportation routes.
Correct. I think the current property that's being used is on Columbus Road.
But the new location that they prefer? I thought it was not near a bus route, but perhaps I'm wrong.
I couldn't remember, I can't, I couldn't comment officially on that.
I agree with member Grace that it would just be kind to ensure that there would be a public transportation way to get there when people had their cars taken away. So I don't know if we should, you know, if we can actually require that. But I do, I do think it would be much better for people if that was possible.
The, excuse my interruption, the property that's Melville Towing, the property is on State Route 550, about, I think about two miles outside of the city limits.
Okay. We have a question, a comment or a question from Councilmember Fall and Councilmember Smedley.
Great, thank you. I'm somewhat uncomfortable changing our code for just one business. I realize that the other businesses will be able to also take part of, because it is code change. I think that it's not just being nice to people who have to go and get their cars. It's like, we deal with a lot of people who are right on the edge of being able to afford something and not afford something. And this is another thing that's like being put in their way. I know that students who've come before council before to talk about some of the equity issues and the fairness issues when it comes to some of the towing regulations and stuff in Athens. So there is concern on that level. So those are my two cents. Thank you.
And Councilmember Smedley, I think you had a comment.
Thank you, President Nysley, member Katsas. I appreciate all the comments and the discussion. And I certainly understand that perspective. What I recalled from the last time we discussed this was that this was an opportunity that we probably would not have considered in a few years ago, when we didn't have services like Lyft and that sort of thing that supplement our public transit service. And so certainly, it's not as affordable as public transit, but there are options out there. But I certainly hear member Fall's points, and would be interested to hear what any comments we hear between now and next session. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for the comments. Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysley. As I understand, our current code says that these lots must be within the city and that we are proposing to move it within five miles of the city. And the Ohio Revised Code states that a lot could be within 25 miles of the city. I don't know if this is a question for member Katsas or Law Director Eliason. Are we running against the Ohio Revised Code by either proclaiming five miles or within the city of Athens?
And Law Director Eliason, would you want to speak to that tonight or later? You're still on mute.
Oh, am I still muted?
There you go.
Okay. So our current code does say impound lots within the city whenever possible. And I really have to take a look at the Ohio Revised Code, but I think some of that same language, "whenever possible," might be in the Ohio Revised Code. I can take a closer look at this as far as the five miles, but I don't believe that we are running afoul of the Ohio Revised Code because there are, I could understand if it's a large city like Columbus or Cleveland, and it's within 25 miles of the city limits. And perhaps, you know, you're on the outer limits there. But in a small town like Athens, it doesn't seem reasonable to make it 25 miles. So I can't imagine we would be running afoul of the Ohio Revised Code. But I do have a recollection of the language in the Revised Code on "whenever possible." And I'll take a look at that, and I will give that to you, member Crowell. And also, member Katsas.
Mayor Patterson?
You know, I agree in theory, although I am not a lawyer, with Lisa Eliason. You know, Director Eliason, I would think to go beyond what the Ohio Revised Code says in terms of distance to pick up your vehicle 40 miles or 50 miles, you know, that's, that is, you know, running against the intent of the Ohio Revised Code versus something that is less than. I think in this case, a less than is, it's less impact on the owner of that vehicle, you know, certainly less than a 25-mile radius versus the five that council is discussing tonight.
And Chief Pyle? Yes.
I just had the vaguest recollection and discussion on this issue that the lot that that wrecker service currently uses is potentially either in or near the Wellhead Protection Area on Columbus Road, and it parallels Hawking River. I can't swear to that, but I'll find out from the system engineer. But I do know that that's been part of our discussion in the past is the storage lot that they currently use being so close in proximity to the Wellhead Protected Area.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing. I just looked up the Revised Code on that. And it has a list of requirements. Located within 25 linear miles, well lighted. It is on or within a reasonable distance of a regularly scheduled route of one or more modes. distance of a regularly scheduled route of one or more modes of public transportation. So it has to be all three of those if it's 25, within 25 miles. So.
Great. Thank you for the, looking that up. Okay.
That's 4513601 Private Tow Zones of the Revised Code.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, we'll move on 11620. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I, General Provisions, Section 11.04.06, to temporarily reduce the vendor's license through December 31, 2020, and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, thank you. I believe at this time I need to ask for suspension of the rules on Ordinance 011620.
Do we have a second?
Okay, great, thank you. And the reason for that is the, the timeframe of this ordinance started October 1st and went through December 31st.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. And did you have a question, Councilmember Smedley, before we vote on the suspension?
I, I do. Thank you, President Isley, Member Kotzis. Was there any, I don't know if now's appropriate time to ask this or after the suspension, but I was curious about the, the end date, the, the change date where we're temporarily reducing it through December 31st, if there was a consideration for extending that, or what was the reasoning for that date?
Before we get involved in answering those questions, let's get on, let's just suspend so I don't forget.
Okay, thank you.
And second to suspend, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Now the rules have been suspended. Councilmember Kotzis?
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make an emotion to adopt 011620.
And do we have a second, please?
Second.
Second, the Councilmember Reisner again, okay?
And this is the, to reduce vendor license fees and through, through December 31st, and this is for uptown vendors who are not seeing the business that they would usually see this time of year, reducing it from $125 a month down to $62.50 a month, a reduction of 50%.
And do, does that answer your question, Councilmember Smedley, or do you want to go on and answer, ask that now?
Yeah, so I guess, I guess we could revisit it again if there was a need to extend it. I see a nod from Mayor Patterson, so I, that does answer my question. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Patterson?
We could revisit this and extend if we find that we have a, a number of vendors taking this up, as well as a number of vendors who would want to vend during the winter months, when we tend to see the vending basically taper off and, and slow down. And for this particular piece of legislation, just to remind people that there was a vendor that reached out to, to my office and had asked for a change such as this because of the impacts of COVID-19, the reduced student body on campus, and indicating to me that due to COVID-19 directly and its impact on the university, that, that customers have, are, are, number one, are going to be much less, and that that could negatively impact their ability to vend. And I felt like this was a responsible response to the pandemic for a sector of the city's business.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Ordinance 11720 is an ordinance establishing a complete streets policy for the city of Athens, and is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, thank you. And if we think going back to spring was a long time ago, which, which it feels like it was, is, Complete Streets, this, this is something that had, we've been working on probably close to about five years now. And this all started through a, and this is to give some history to some of the members that, that weren't present there during this, this time, because this, this ordinance did come before council last, last, late last year, and, and it's taken another year before we, I've been able to bring it forward again. But Complete Streets, it's a holistic look at street, street projects, and it's not aimed towards trying to give a specific mode of transportation favor, but at the same time, it looks at all modes and how does it make our streets work better with all those systems together. So, you know, we're talking multimodal, you know, bus, you know, regular, single-passenger car transit, bicycle and pedestrian, you know, facilities and infrastructure. So this is something that the Health Department put together a, a coalition many, many years ago, and I would, I would, I would maybe lean on even Member Crowell because he was there during the time, not as a council member, but as part of OU's Sustainability Office. I also know that the Health, the Health Department leading the charge, you know, the Clack County Planner was there also. I can't remember the other groups that were present. This ordinance came before council last year, and there was some discussion amongst council members that they would like to see some reporting from EPW to, back to council. And so I had some conversations in January and February with Safety Service Director Andy Stone, and from EPW, Bob Hetty and Jessica Dine. And so we did reach a agreeance and added reporting to the, to the, to the ordinance. That, that change is in the last paragraph. So I do want to mention that this, this ordinance doesn't guarantee that every element becomes present on every street project. You know, take for example, like Grant Street, where we added pedestrian facilities, but didn't, didn't add additional, you know, multimodal type systems because it wasn't, it wasn't a street that would be designated for something like that within the city. But it's something that allows us to continue to think about the streets in the way that we think that the citizens, the majority of the citizens in Athens would like to see it. You know, I think about the comprehensive plan, this ordinance fits in line with, with that. The age-friendly conversation that is happening right now, this is something, because you look at the streets not only from the vehicle mode, you know, style that, that, that people are using the right of way, but it also looks at the, the age of the population, and so that you can have someone, you know, very, very young, or on the other end of the spectrum, be able to interface with that street in, in a safe manner. So this, this ordinance has been, been a long time in the works. Please feel free to look it over. We will have the full three reads on this, and, and we can even continue the conversation tonight.
Yeah. Councilmember Crowell?
Thank you, President Isley. Thank you, Member Kotzis, for continuing to work on this, I think, important policy. I was someone who previously, when discussing this, did think it would, it would be a reporting feature, would be a, a positive inclusion to this ordinance. If I understand, if I remember correctly, we had some questions about allowing our Director of Engineering to have exceptions, and the idea really on the reporting was just to, to understand what those exceptions were. I think we all understood that there would be exceptions, but that, that should be in the annual report that the EPW Department provides of what those, what those exceptions were and why they were. And they will always be part of the conversation as we go through design phases for, for projects. Those conversations will be had. So I appreciate this, Member Kotzis, and I look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you.
And if I can make one more point, I always forget something in my, in my, my jumbled notes here. Having an ordinance like this on the book makes us more competitive points-wise when we're, when we're competing for grants. So when you look at, at something that we can kind of help give the city a leg up on securing more funds for streets, this, this, this falls right in line with that also.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Good. Okay, good to see this moving forward. We'll move on to Ordinance 11820, and this is an ordinance amending, Ordinance 8320, to extend the pilot program for installation of temporary sidewalk extensions within the public rights of way and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, thank you. I would like to make a motion to suspend Ordinance 011820.
Second.
Have a second from Councilmember Claude Filter?
And the reason for this is that the, the pilot timeframe for this project already expired on October 1st, and we're looking for an extension to November 15th.
So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, thank you. I would like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 011820.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. And, you know, as we had, had a very good conversation last week in, in Transportation Committee Session, this was, this is for the parklets, basically allowing people to continue through the fall season with the, with the pilot program that was, that was put in by council, was that back in May, I believe?
I can't hear President Isley.
I'm sorry, I'm the same way.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, nay? Okay, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 11920 is an ordinance establishing guidelines for approval and installation of temporary sidewalk extensions or parklets. Okay. For use by the general public at appropriate locations within the public rights of way and amending Athens City Code Title XI Business Regulations, Chapter 11.06 Miscellaneous Business Regulations, Section 11.06. We wrote two exceptions, and introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, thank you. So this is a, a parallel piece of legislation. We, we decided after the, the conversation last Monday night that, that council was ready to go from a pilot to, to an actual ordinance. So we, we decided that we needed to extend the pilot, so that's why we had the suspension and passage of that program as the last ordinance, but this one, moving forward, will get three reads, and it'll basically allow businesses to have an additional option to, to conduct business in the uptown area, and perhaps add a, a new element that, that will allow our, our businesses and our cities to be a little bit, our city to be a little bit more competitive when it, when it comes to our uptown area.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this? Mayor Patterson?
Just a comment. I would encourage council to look at seasonal operations, the seasonal operations section of this piece of legislation or the guidelines. I have to give a lot of credit to Deputy Service Safety Director Andrew Chickie. He's put a lot of time and energy into this, and I believe has worked with the Law Director on this as well. But in there, you'll see the program, if moving forward, if council authorizes, it would be May 1 through September 30th of the calendar year, but there's also an additional clause that is basically an extension of the season, maybe granted by the Service Safety Director on a case-by-case basis. And the reason for that clause is much like your extending the, the pilot program, because it has been seasonally warmer, except for this week. But anyway, it, it will certainly, if weather permits, it gives the owners a little bit more room in which to continue to have the parklets in place if the weather's nice.
Thank you. And any other comments or questions? Okay. And we'll move on to announcements and other business. Next week, we will be having committee meetings, and I do believe that we have established that several committees are already going to be meeting. If, you should check with the Clerk of Council by Wednesday to be able to put your committee on the agenda. Do we have any other announcements, either from council members or the mayor or the auditor, or the Law Director?
No.
Pyle, anything else? Okay, we're good. All right, we'll move on to an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that are not covered on the agenda. And I thought what I'd do tonight is, especially since we have some new viewers, and also even for my own purposes, to review our rules of council on when the public speaks. And we do abide by these rules, and so it's just good to familiarize everybody with them. When any person is about to address the council, he or she shall request permission from the president, or in this case, you'll be doing it via Zoom and raising your hand. No debate, disrespect, or obscenities shall be tolerated. The president of council shall rule any such individual out of order. Citizens shall be permitted to speak only one time at each regular session of council. Each speaker shall identify himself or herself by name, home address, and acknowledge any paid and/or voluntary affiliation. Each speaker will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, and I do keep a timer, just like we do in council chambers, and we try to keep our discussion with, for that topic, the total amount of time on the topic within 15 minutes. The, that shall include all of the participation by council members, elected officials, and administrative representatives, unless permission to extend the time has been granted by the president of council. Council members, other officials, and administrative representatives shall not debate public speakers, and we don't typically debate, we don't answer questions. This is a time for the public to comment, and our main request is that you be respectful of the time and respectful of, of everybody participating tonight. So with that, I've got my timer out, and I see that we have the hand raised for several persons, and I believe, Scott, you'll be letting people in one by one to be able to speak. And the first one, it looks like, is Genesis Vaughn. Genesis, if you could give us your name, address, and any affiliation you might have with any group?
Hi, yes, City Council. My name is Genesis Vaughn. I live in Athens, and I'm affiliated with Athens County Cop Watch, but I also do work in the city as a community health worker within HIV prevention.
Okay. Well, welcome, and I'll set the timer for three minutes. And can you give us your street address, please?
That would be 8 West Stimson Avenue.
Thank you. And I will start the timer for three minutes.
Am I able to speak now?
Yes, you are. Go ahead.
All righty. Hello, Athens City Council. My name is Genesis Vaughn. My pronouns are she, her, they, them, and I both live and work in Athens as a community health worker within HIV prevention. As many others might have felt back on June 22nd, I was quite glad to hear that City Council passed a resolution recognizing racism as a public health crisis, in line with the likes of other cities and municipalities across the country, including Franklin County just north of us. Now, almost foremost... Now, almost four months later, I wish I could thank you for taking this action. But with no real investigation into racism within Athens County or Athens Police Department and the quick dismissal of any possibility of defunding APD, I find myself instead disappointed, to say the least. Understanding the many factors that play into social determinants of health, such as one's community and neighborhood, it is no surprise that while black people and other people of color continue to face disproportionate levels of police violence, we also experience poor health outcome. This is especially the case with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, as black and Latinx communities continue to experience far more deaths than our white counterparts. If you think that racist policing is no issue in Athens, please think again. Athens County Cop Watch has done all of your investigation for you, and they have found that not only are black people arrested about 1.5 times more than white people, but we are also experiencing use of force 2.6 times more than white people. Racism is indeed an issue. This October, as you go into renegotiating APD's contract, please remember that this month is also National LGBTQ History Month. Policing is and always has been a direct threat to the lives of queer and trans people, especially those of color, particularly trans women of color like myself. Roxanne Moore, a black trans woman, was shot 16 times by police in Reading, Pennsylvania on September 13th, and she still remains in recovery. Let's make sure that we don't have a similar tragedy here in Athens. Let's stop making empty promises. Let's start protecting our community. Defund APD and make Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, it looks like Damon Crane is our next person who wanted to speak. And Damon, you have three minutes. If you could give us also your address and any group with which you might be affiliated.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, you can.
Thank you very much. So I'm Damon Crane, 96 Hudson Avenue, and I'm with Athens County Cop Watch. I think council's June 22nd resolution was great. It just lacked any resolve. You committed to do something that it seems you have no intention of actually doing. In your resolution, you stated that institutional racism, including within policing, is a problem nationally. Then you directed Athens City Government to investigate whether it's also a problem locally. And finally, you said if any instances of institutional racism were discovered within Athens City Governance, you'd take the necessary steps to eliminate them. So the course of action that your resolution laid out, it's totally sensible. You just didn't follow it. In fact, you immediately contradicted it. Because the very next thing you did, without any investigation having been conducted, was to announce there was no problem with racism in local policing, and that no reallocation of police funding would be considered. It's now three and a half months later, and you still haven't conducted any investigation. Yet you're about to approve next year's city budget and renew APD's union contract. Are you seriously going to do either of those things without first investigating local policing? And we know you've been busy with the pandemic. We've all been busy with the pandemic. Yet while you found the time to pass a special ordinance allowing two homeowners to put up a fence in their yard, and the time to amend a section of the city code having to do with the cutting of weeds, a group of concerned citizens came together and we conducted the investigation you called for. We obtained and analyzed hundreds of pages of local police data, and we found clear evidence of racist local policing, plus an unusually high amount of money being spent on that policing, right here in the middle of the poorest and most income unequal county in Ohio. Yet here you are closing Arts West and laying off its director, but not cutting from the police budget. APD is spending about 50 grand per year on uniforms alone, which apparently include officers' personal running shoes and many other questionable purchases. APD funding has gone up 17% since 2017. And between APD and OUPD, $10 million per year is being spent on two departments whose jurisdictions are limited to a city of 25,000 people eight months of the year and about 10,000 people over the summer. That's substantially higher police spending per capita than what the state of Ohio spends per capita on all local and state policing combined. We at Athens County Cop Watch started publishing our findings on June 5th. They've been the subject of at least half a dozen news articles, and yet you still refuse to respond to them. And so, you know, we're in a situation where really, we're just calling for you to do exactly what you pledged to do three and a half months ago. So if you want to post to Facebook saying, "I am not a racist," that's fine, but how about you show us what being anti-racist looks like?
Mr. Crane, Mr. Crane, your time is up. So if you could close your statement now.
And if you want to condemn racism, that's fine, too. How about actually working to end racism? Thank you.
Thanks for the comments. Okay.
President Nisley, if I could just jump in real quick, there's a lot of feedback that I'm hearing from the speakers. I'm not sure what needs, if there's anything that can be done about that. I can still hear them clearly, but just wanted to make that comment. If any future speakers have anything that they could do to reduce that. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for the, yeah, there is a lot of feedback. It looks like Delfin Bautista, if you could give us your address and any groups with which you're affiliated. And you'll have three minutes. Good evening, Delfin. If you want, you have three minutes. Please give us your address and any groups with which you're affiliated.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Address and any groups with which you're affiliated, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Delfin Bautista, 28 Ohio Avenue. I am affiliated with Athens County Cop Watch as well as the Southeastern Ohio Rainbow Alliance. My pronouns are they and them. When I thought this to members of City Council, Mayor Patterson, and other city leaders, I come before you as a trans and queer person of color. I come before you as a person who has come to call Athens home and who has worked with many of you on council. I come before you scared, tired, and angry. In June, City Council issued a bold statement, racism is a public health crisis. This resolution committed the city to creating a work group to promote racial equity and community engagement. The resolution stated that racial equity would be infused throughout the city, from city code to HR policies to training for elected officials. However, I ask you, how have we lived into this resolution? How have you moved from words to actions? Words are great, but words are not enough. Words will not prevent black members of our community from being profiled and harassed by the police. Words will not dismantle systems of injustice that minoritize and marginalize individuals within the city that prides itself for being inclusive. Words will not ensure my well-being. I ask myself, can a council with no one who looks like me also ensure my well-being? Making statements such as denying one's racism, or transphobia, or ableism, or sexism is an okay start. But what are you doing to live into and to live out those statements? Given all that is happening politically in our state and in our country, we need leaders who do not self-proclaim their allyship, but who boldly embody accomplicehood through both words and actions. There are many words being thrown around: defund, abolish, restructure, reform, reallocate. I'm mindful each of these words is loaded. I invite you to move beyond the words and affirm that they all reflect that a true problem exists and that changes are needed now. There is both anecdotal evidence and quantitative research that reflects that racism exists here in Athens. There are stories of people of color being treated very differently by the police compared to white members of the community. Even if we as a city only had one incident of mistreatment, one incident of racist policing is already too many. I am mindful of the realities of COVID and the need to protect both our health and the health of others. This said, there are many ways to participate in rallies both in person and/or virtually. I find it fascinating that those most at risk of being victimized by racist acts and of being impacted by COVID are the ones who are risking the most by carrying the burden of demanding change. What are you?
Delfin, your three minutes is up, so if you could bring your closing statement, that would be good.
I close with a simple question. What are you doing and what will you do? Muchas gracias.
Thank you for the comments. And it looks like we have Ellie, who indicated that they would like to speak. And Ellie, if you could give us your address, and then also any affiliate, your affiliation with any groups. And you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Ellie Hamrick. My pronouns are she or they. I live on Columbus Road, and I'm a member of Athens County Cop Watch. I want to say that Athens is the poorest and most equal county in Ohio. You've all heard me say that many times, and that was before global pandemic, mass layoffs, and yet another massive upward redistribution of wealth. For many people here in our county, these are desperate times. Even before the pandemic, Athens had the highest rate of food insecurity in the state, with 19.3% of county residents not having enough food. Women, children, and the elderly are especially vulnerable to food insecurity. That's an emergency. So why did last year's city budget include 5.5 million for APD and no money at all to combat poverty and food insecurity? Why are police getting a fancy new headquarters while children literally starve? Why does Athens spend more per capita on police than the state of Ohio overall? Is it because police are necessary to keep us safe? No. Sociologists, anthropologists, geographers, and public health scholars consistently find that policing does not keep people safer. I know you know that because I've told you myself many times. In fact, both nationally and here in Athens, there is no correlation between police spending per capita and the violent crime rate. If police don't keep us safe, what do they do? They cause harm in our community, and especially so for black folks, other people of color, and LGBTQ people. At their best, when they are following the letter of the law, police harass, arrest, abuse, and kidnap people and put them in cages. If policing doesn't keep us safe, what does? All the evidence shows that the only effective way to prevent violent crime and support public safety is making sure that everyone's basic needs are met. Everyone deserves safe, quality housing. Everyone deserves an abundance of healthy food. Everyone deserves healthcare. Yet because our city's priorities are so out of whack, many of our friends and neighbors do not have these things. I'm sure you all think of yourselves as people who believe that science is real and that public policy should be based on scientific fact. So why are you ignoring the research in this area? Why is our city budget based on delusions instead of evidence? What you do here matters. Your decisions affect people's lives. The only sensible solution is a massive redirection of resources away from harmful and unnecessary policing and toward ending poverty, up to and including the total abolition of police. In addition, police should be stripped of all deadly or potentially deadly weapons, and a great many activities that are currently criminalized, such as sex work and drug crimes, should be made legal. To the extent that they are harmful, harm reduction strategies should be implemented. There are a lot more changes that need to be made, too, and all of them should be made democratically and with the central involvement of those most adversely affected by policing. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellie. And it looks like we have one other speaker, Bailey Plumlee. And Bailey, if you would give us your address and any affiliation with any groups, and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yes, my name is Bailey Plumlee. I'm a member of Athens County Cop Watch, and I'm also a student at Ohio University. To the members of Athens City Council, I'm a fourth-year undergraduate student at Ohio University. My opinions are my own, but I assure you they are representative of a great many within the student community here in Athens. My fellow members of the Athens County Cop Watch have already outlined a number of serious issues in need of addressing within the city of Athens and local law enforcement. They've also done you the favor of offering some potentialist solutions. I stand here in unity with them. I agree with their suggestions and urge you to become a part of the radical change this country so desperately needs. However, I won't deny that some of these ideas might be intimidating to someone in your position. So I figured I would help you out by providing a simple starting point: push for the firing of Officer Ethan Dorr. I know you know who Ethan Dorr is. I know beyond a shadow of a doubt that you remember the September 2019 incident in which Ty Beeler, a black student from the University of Cincinnati, was punched to the ground, pressed into the bricks of Core Street, and tased repeatedly, even after being pinned by Dorr and two other officers. All of this, of course, was caught on video. You may also be aware, although I can't be sure, of the 2018 incident in which Dorr tased Jacob Francis and caused him to fall 15 to 20 feet down three steps and into a wall. Francis was unconscious for 60 seconds and had to receive emergency medical treatment. That one may have reached you. But do you know that Dorr has been sued twice for excessive use of force? Do you know that he has been behind at least 16 use-of-force incidents since April of 2018? Do you know that he deploys force at more than three times the rate of the average APD officer? Or that he is six times more likely to do so with a black person than a white person? Do you know he arrests black folks at 1.6 times the rate of white folks, which, by the way, is not even the worst on the force? Do you know that Dorr deploys his taser an average of 2.49 times per year compared to a department average of 0.2? If you didn't know those things before, you do now. You may also want to know that Police Chief Tom Pyle described Dorr's conduct during the 2019 Ty Beeler incident as, quote, "justified and restrained," unquote, as well as the fact that none of Dorr's six performance reviews included negative feedback from his fellow officers. And I know I don't need to remind any of you all what you said in response to the 2019 incident, but hey, I guess that's besides the point of what I promised to focus on, right? For any elected official tasked with serving the public, ignorance is a poor excuse for an action. But you aren't even ignorant, are you? At the very least, you now know everything I've just told you. One of APD's so-called protectors of the law is a threat to public health. Athens County Cop Watch knows it. The people around me with flyers in their hands know it. The 700-plus people who have signed my petition for Dorr's firing know it, and now you know it, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plumlee. All right. Thanks for attending tonight, and...
President Nisley?
Yes?
I see one other person with their hand raised in my chat, Mr. Brendan Moran.
Yes, and I'm sorry I have made a list and his name is not on that. So yes, Brendan. We've got enough time for another comment. So if you could give us your address, any affiliation that you might have, and you'll then have three minutes to speak.
Yep, my name is Brendan. I'm with, can you turn off your sounds on? It's creating a sound loop. You good? All right. So my name is Brendan. I'm with Athens County Cop Watch, and I live on West State Street. Am I, let me know when I'm good.
You are good, but if there's something, some way you can mute whoever else might be with you that's making a huge echo, but if not, once you start speaking, I won't start the timer until you start speaking.
All right, is this better?
That's a little bit better, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
All right. First, I'd like to mention APD's First, I'd like to mention APD's union contract ends this year, and the city must advise the police union of intent to renegotiate by November 1. I demand that these contracts are renegotiated with community input. We have uncovered clear patterns of racist policing by APD, so I would like to talk about alternatives to policing that I'd like to see here in Athens. I'll be focusing on two different models. The Whiteburg Clinic's Kahoots model and Cure Violence. Kahoots, or Crisis Assistance Helping Out on the Streets, is a program in Eugene, Springfield, Oregon, in which teams of an EMS and a social worker address issues of non-emergency medical care, homelessness, intoxication, substance abuse, suicide, and other mental health issues. In Eugene Springfield, the program handles 20% of local 911 calls. The program costs roughly $9 per capita, whereas in the same two cities spend roughly a combined $384 per capita on police. This program ends up saving the city of Eugene an average of $8.5 million per year. We believe that this program will yield similar results here in Athens. From 2015 to 2020, Kahoots could have potentially addressed 19% to 21% of APD's calls for service, 16% to 17% of APD's arrests, and a staggering 35% to 40% of APD's use-of-force incidents. However, Kahoots isn't designed to address violent crimes. And this is where Cure Violence steps in. Cure Violence is a model which treats violence as a disease by detecting and interrupting, identifying and treating high-risk individuals, and changing social norms. While the Cure Violence model was originally designed to address gun violence, which does affect our community, the program has been modified to address a wide range of violence. We believe that this model could be adapted to treat drunk fights in Athens Uptown Bar District. APD's Calls for Service from 2015 to 2020 shows that roughly 48% of 911 calls for fights occurred uptown near the bars, with a large percentage of those fights breaking out in the stretch between Stevens and Pigskin. A Cure Violence model could engage with the public on the streets about the consequences of violence, as well as interrupting and de-escalating conflicts before they become violent. Alternatives to police are efficient, cost-effective, and humane. We demand the City Council defunds APD to fund social services, demilitarizes APD, ensures APD does not arrest and jail individuals for petty crimes in the middle of a highly infectious global pandemic, decriminalize all drug use, legalize no-knock and quick-knock warrants, legalize all civil asset forfeiture, end the cash bail system, renegotiate APD's union contracts with community input, enact a hiring freeze for APD, impose strict vetting process for any police officer asked to participate in Athens through the mutual aid agreements, and allow for community input in the city budgeting process. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. That was perfect timing, your three minutes was up. Okay, and thank you for the comments tonight. And I don't see any other hands raised. So I would entertain a motion for our council meeting to adjourn.
May I ask a question, President Nisley?
Yes.
Were we, were you still planning to have us talk to the journalism students?
We will be after we adjourn.
Excuse me, oh, sorry.
A motion to adjourn, please.
Second?
Crowe, and seconded by, I think, Council Member Fall. Thank you, I see you waving your hand. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.